Paul, we're thankful for this day. We thank you for the brains you gave us last night and we're so appreciative of that. We'd ask you always to help us to be mindful, to use the knowledge, but give us the wisdom that we need in order to use it. This time of year as we're picking people that will be leading our nation, give us the time to pick the right person to lead us back to our country the way it should be, the way the founders continued to do it. We're thankful for that and thankful for all those who protect us that were overseas and watch us, whatsoever, to give us the freedom that we all enjoy. Thank you again for your son who died at large, towards his name in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, I have a number of individuals who have asked time to speak before the court here in our remarks and views, but I'm going to ask you to wait just a few moments before we get to that. The next item that I would like to do is the consent agenda. And commissioners, if you have, I believe we did receive a revised set of minutes from the January 25th meeting this morning from the county clerk's office. And I'll read the except minutes, January 4th, 2016, January 25th, 2016, February 1st, 2016, February 3rd, 2016, February 8th, 2016, February 10th, 2016. Item B is to discuss and consider a deputation of Patricia Cook C. and Patricia Linoz for the county clerk's office. C is to discuss and consider the annual budget, actually it's the annual audit budget of the emergency services district number seven. Also, D is to discuss and consider placement of file or optic cable conduit on the County Road 269 located in the unincorporated portion of Kaufman County. E is to discuss and consider approving form of electric call up to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 222, sorry, 222, that is in Kaufman County 372. And also you have a copy of the city sales tax for Kaufman County for our cities during the month of February. And I believe that goes back to the two months preceding, but it goes back to December. So we, if you notice, we have some very healthy, our cities had some very healthy gains in sales tax. Does anybody have any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda?
I want to make a quick correction from the work. How many questions?
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Shane. We have a second. Commissioner Allen, second to motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next thing I'd like to do includes the item number three. And we do have a special group of people here with us this morning that are here. I believe actually we may be a week late, but we didn't forget at least. And this happens to be the week, or last week was the, we're claiming February 22nd, 2016, as court reporter's appreciation day in Kaufman County. And our two county court law judges and our two district judges, I guess all the judges are here this morning, I'm not sure. But if you are judges, if you would step forward with your clerks, and I believe you have a plaque that has already been included. Judge Jones, I don't see Judge Jones, but come on up, Sherry.
Judge Jones had a jury trial.
So do we. Let's, let me just read this, and they all say the same thing. And then we wanted the judges to say something about their individuals and court reporters as well. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to all four of our reporters, and one of y'all maybe can recognize the other reporter who is not here with Judge Jones. And this is in appreciation of your efforts, commitment, and execution of duties which have played a valuable role in Kaufman County. And this is for the 86th district courtroom. Thank you for the extraordinary amount of time contributed to help preserve court records. You've shared your time, your talents, and yourself with each of us in common efforts to serve Kaufman County. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Kaufman County Commissioners' Court and its citizens that we take pleasure in extending this expression of gratitude to whatever the person or whatever court they serve, a dedicated court reporter of all of Kaufman County. So let's give them a round of hands. Give them a round of hands. Give the last judges the enthusiasm there is.
Be happy to do that. My court reporter is Donna Gale. Donna has been my reporter ever since I was appointed to the bench back in January '04 by Governor Perry. Here's Judge Jones and Scott Smith. But Donna is just the consummate professional when it comes to court reporting. She's also the meanest little person in our history of life.
Amen.
If we ever need an iron hand in the courtroom, Donna will bring him back in line. But she's well-loved, I'll tell you, by the bar, and we also love her in my court. She does a great job, very professional, and looking forward to many more years of working with Donna. So Donna, it's my pleasure that I present the certificate to you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I'll go next. Beth Woods, like I said, I don't have quite as many stories as Judge J. yet. Only one year on the bench, but I'm very appreciative of that. She always comes out in as many ways as she possibly can and wears many hats, so I'm very appreciative, and it's also my honor to present this to you.
And this is Sherry Hooper to my right, and she's my court reporter, and she does a great job. She's become not only a coworker, but a friend of mine. If you don't know my courtroom, it's not a whole lot bigger than this room right here. It's probably the smallest courtroom in the state of Texas, and you would think that you could hear in that courtroom, but you can't. There's windows there on one side, and there's diesel trucks and ambulances coming by, and Sherry, in spite of that, does a great job. I really appreciate her work, and I'm glad to be able to present this to you. Sherry, thank you very much.
The court reporter for the county court of law number one is Scott Smith. He has been a lot of places. I think he started out in Waukesha Hage, worked a few years there, went to Dallas County, worked a long time there. In fact, I think he retired out of Dallas County. About that same time, he moved to Kaufman County, and so he has been the court reporter for Kaufman County Court of Law for about eight or nine years. That's his second job. His first job, and his most important job, is he serves the Lord as the preacher at the church on 175. His third job is he can do anything you want him to do. If you've got an electrical problem, he's got natural. If you've got a flooding problem, he's done it. Works on cars, he can do it. Anything and everything, he is the most versatile person I have ever met in my whole life. And he has this for Kaufman County. He is a great individual, a great Christian, and a great friend of mine. His name is Scott Smith. Thank you very much, God.
Thank you all very much. Y'all getting work good.
Thanks for taking time.
Good to see you.
Do you want him over here?
Now, if we would move to item number 12 on the agenda, we would also, this is Commissioner Allen's precinct, to discuss and consider approving the resolution for the Blueview Senior Village and affordable rental housing development located in 741 north of U.S. 175, Kaufman County, for item number four. Jake, you want to tell us a bit?
Yes, Mark Feaster is here with the development, and he's got a short formula to show us. It's already been presented to the Crandall City Council, and they are a hundred percent in favor of it. They have it right now, it's located in the county, but seated at 110, instructed by the Fire and Water Plan, it's at 414.
Is it the ETJ or Crandall?
Oh, yes. Yeah. They all travel, they don't keep the signature system up on that pop up. They're working. So Mark, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Judge, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. As mentioned, I'm Mark Feaster with JES Development, and I do have a very short slideshow here that I'd like to show you regarding the development, and also if you have any questions at any time during, don't hesitate to ask. As mentioned, the name of our project is Blueview Senior Village, and the location is in the northwest quadrant of 741 and 175, purchasing about three and a half acres. It's just north of the fireworks stand area, and actually between it and the cemetery. We're proposing 48 units of housing for seniors, 55 and older. Our total estimated direct construction cost is about $4.8 million, and our total development cost, including land, engineering, all of that is about $7 million. This is the site plan showing the three and a half acres and approximately how the building will be located on the acreage. Community will consist of one three-story building containing the 48 units, and it will be made up of one two-bedroom and a four-to-one market of eight units with a first-floor common area for the residents. Common amenities that will be housed on that first floor are a fitness center, outside we'll have a gazebo with barbecue grills, business center, leasing office with full-time manager. Obviously, we'll provide elevators for access to them floors, and then there will be several smaller interior gathering areas. We have a library, and a large community room for all residents, laundry facility. The community rooms that we put in these facilities all have kitchens and all provide for indoor and outdoor activities. What we find is that the residents really become a community within themselves and really enjoy these areas and getting together for cards and, I like dinners and games. We even have a couple that have formed wee bowling leagues and have annual, or weekly bowling matches. Exterior of our buildings are 100% masonry, usually 75% stone, 25% fiberglass in that board, and then we use 30-year architectural shingles for all the roofing. There will be about 14 market rate units of the 48, and then there will be 32 targeted at 60% below the area, meaning income. That income limit for this area is about $34,000 for a two-bedroom unit, about $30,000 for a one-bedroom unit. As I mentioned, it is 48 units. There's 15 one-bedrooms, approximately 700 square feet, and 33 two-bedrooms at about 922 square feet. They all have full kitchens, ceiling fans in the living room and bedrooms, washer dryer connections. We provide all the window coverings and then carpeting and hard flooring throughout. Just a little bit about us, JES Development has been doing this for 30 years. This is a program that was implemented by Ronald Reagan back in 86 in an attempt to get the federal government out of providing affordable housing and getting private developers and private capital to do that. Jeff Smith, who is the JS of JES, started the company back, run the program first, has been responsible for developing over 125 apartment communities with over 4,300 residential Affordable Equity Partners is the company, our company that takes the tax credits that are awarded to the projects and essentially turns them into cash. They sell their federal income tax credits, they get sold to large corporations, banks, life insurance companies, and in turn that cash comes in to the project to help build it. AEP has been involved in over 400 of these tax credit developments, so you can see we do, we do, we do work with other developers besides JES, and we've syndicated over $3 billion since, in the 10 or 12 years that AEP has been in business. Our architect is Martin Riley, and we've worked with him for several years. He specializes in senior assisted living and condominium development, and has won federal awards for his designs. Fairway Construction is another company of JES, so we build all of our own projects. We essentially are a construction management company, so we try to utilize as much as possible local subcontractors and local suppliers. They've been at it for 27 years, completed over 130 apartment communities, 4,500 units, and a little over $375 million in construction value. And then we also manage our own properties. Fairway Management is our fully-owned management company, currently managing over 7,500 units in 170 different communities, occupancy averaging 90%. And these are the states that we do business in, Missouri, Georgia, Tennessee, South Carolina, Texas, and New Mexico. We actually are in Oklahoma right now, too. The reason, Commissioner Allen touched on it a little bit, the reason that we're here today is part of, we apply for this financing, for these tax credits through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Part of their application process is local support. Because we are in, this land is currently in the ETJ of Crandall, we're required to get Crandall city support and the county support. So as Commissioner Allen mentioned, we did get, a couple of weeks ago, we did get the Crandall resolution support, and what I'm here today for is to ask for the county resolution support. We have to turn these applications in on March 1st, and we know if we've been successful, and I'll say right now, we are in first place with this project, so if we know we've been successful, the awards are announced in July, and then once that occurs, we typically start construction within first quarter to the following year. Texas is a little bit different. We have kind of a 12-month building period down here, so we might be able to start it a little earlier. So open to any questions.
In your, in the list here, it talks about the Blueview Senior Village. Explain what senior means. Is that an age?
Yes, you have to be 55 or older to live there.
I would apologize to some other guy. So that is for senior, but it's not an assisted living.
No, no, we develop what we'd like to call active senior development. So they live on their own. The only thing that we provide is areas for them to do what they want to do. We do, in some cases, we work with the local meals on wheels, and therefore we bring them in, and they can use our facility to not only provide meals for any residents of ours, but also for the community. I had talked to a cop about that, and they sounded pretty excited that we're successful in this, of being able to utilize our facility for all the Crandall people that they provide meals on wheels for. But it is 55 and older.
I know there was an age restriction, but also no children are allowed to live there.
Right.
So that makes it nice.
Grandchildren can come visit, but they can't permanently live there, so.
Yeah, too weak.
Yeah.
That's a good limit.
Yeah.
You attended the city council, maybe?
Yes. We think it was very valuable, they're looking forward to it, and it's something that the town needs, definitely.
And they are planning on annexing this property sometime?
As soon as everything's approved, obviously. Yes, obviously, we don't, we won't act on behalf of the current landowner, we've annexed it before, but once, and I've visited with him a little bit, we're, you know, we're trying to decide if they want us to go ahead and build it and annex it or annex the land before we start building. But at some point in time, they want us to be annexed, and obviously we don't know, no problem whatsoever doing that.
Commissioners, any thought of any questions?
Sounds like a great deal. Thank you all. Thank you for being here, and I know you've got a catchphrase, we appreciate you coming in today, looking at item number 12, do I have a motion on that? Is that a motion from Commissioner Allen, and his second, Commissioner Resalik? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. And we will get that resolution to you. Rest of the things, thank you.
Certainly appreciate it. Thank you all.
All righty, we do have a number, beginning of the agenda, but I want to kind of put them together. We have a number of people here that are wanting to speak on one particular item, and let me get these here. We have Mrs. Whitfield, Shirley Whitfield, from County Road 168, and she wishes to talk on. This is in the open section. This would be the, whether we have people that speak at the beginning of the. It's not on the agenda. We have new Commissioners' Court rules of procedure that we have. It's not only agenda. It's not, it's. Even in open session?
Yes.
Rebecca, is that correct?
I'm reading, Rebecca, are you representing the board commissioner?
Item number four, and the rules of procedure, the adopted, the rules of Commissioners' Court procedure, the tax recommended.
I do have it with me, and the commissioner is right. That's the way it's phrased in our rules.
And they requested it be put on the agenda by me, and I forwarded it to you, I believe, but you did not want it on the agenda, is that correct? This is nothing that the Commissioners are going to make a definitive decision. I've spoken with all those residents. Have you spoken with them?
No, no, he has not, sir.
Okay, that's your, that's your, Rebecca, thanks for clarifying that. And we'll probably. They're always welcome to contact me, come to my office. I've spoken to everyone on this call, on the front of the calls, and I think we've got it. I explained the procedure of, of reconstruction, so if they have any further problem, they're more than welcome to come to my office. Okay, thank you for being here, and you're welcome to say for the meeting, since it is not on the agenda, as verified by the district attorney, and I should have verified that myself, you will not be able to allow, you will not be able to speak in the open forum portion of our meeting, but obviously Commissioner Resalik says you're certainly welcome to come by. Please, please come to my office. This is what they say for our kids, for one. I'll be in my office every, every week. Thank you, Paul. I'm going to have to go over them. Thank you very much. This is not that. Please come to my office. Happy to speak with you. Mr. Needham, you are here to speak about Rolling Hills State, and I'm not sure if that's on, that's not on the agenda, I heard, Mr. Needham. So you will not, I have the opportunity to speak this morning. You certainly can go by and visit with your Commissioner, Mr. Shane. We've done have no response for two and a half months. Okay, well, you'll need to go by and set up kind of a visit with him. Thank you for being here. All right, moving right along then. Next item is number four, Laura Hughes' presentation of 2015 State of Texas Health Services temporary five-star service award given to Kaufman County clerks. Laura, if you'd like to tell us about this honor.
I wanted to bring to the Commissioners' Court, you know, I presented them and also recognized my staff for the five-star, the five-star vital award. We were presenting this at the Vital Statistics Conference. This is the 11th time since 2000 that my office has received this award, and we cleverly repeat, have the executive status six or seven times. This award is presented annually for excellence in the area of vital registration. There's a set of criteria that the people have, that local registers have to achieve. This year's competition, there were 529 local registers, only 26 of those local registers received executive, and only 11 county clerks were awarded the executive status. And we always love getting news that we won it, but it's something that I wanted to bring to the court's attention, that these clerks work every day in order to receive this award, and in doing so, they assure the protection of the record and also the accessibility of the field. And I just wanted to recognize them for all their hard work.
Thank you very much. You have a staff you truly be proud of. Would any of them like to give a speech?
You guys got to come at least over here to take a picture.
Where do you want them standing?
A little standing.
There you go. Okay, everybody, you know the old joke, right? You have to get closer, like you like each other? Okay, there you go. All right, everybody smile. Great. Excellent work. Thank you. And Mike, thank you for being up. I'm here for you. Right there. All right, moving right along. Item number five is to discuss, consider approving a cell phone allowance for Patrick Doughty and Gage Regalman. And we have George is around here, I believe, someplace he's got all the phone, he's got to go here. Okay, appreciate it. Is that Gage you're talking to?
George trying to correct some pretty serious issues with the power of them, and so the emails are down in the public. He's trying to deal with that right now.
Yeah, we can move, uh, we can move-
We discussed that everything else, we got everything on version of power.
But what happened to power?
Sorry about that, guys.
Somebody hit a pole, I think, or a fan.
So, the first casual bit of news is, we asked, we had an outage, someone hit a pole, generators didn't come out in time, any device, any computer, any server that, um, outlived the time of the UPS went down, so, anyway, things are going back online, mail server's back on, and the timing was really good, because we've got that number two, I might ask mail server, talk about it. So, anyway, so, the first one was, I think my first item had to do with, um-
Cell phone line.
Okay, yes, yeah, so Glory mentioned, uh, we need to get this on the agenda, so our thinking is, rather than hire clerical staff and secretaries, answer the telephone, we'll, our plan is just form the phones with the cell phone, okay, so it saves a lot of money, so it makes sense to just, you know, just take care of the phone, in other words, Gage is out, uh, working, doing address, and he gets calls for folks that have a flood issue, who knows, whatever, need a map, instead of having a recording on a phone, we just forward that to the cell phone, that's, that's what, that's what that's all about. We could hire clerical staff and secretary, but it doesn't make sense, because then you've got to train them, the, the whole, the whole business process.
Alright, so, your request-
Patrick Schuler, hired guy?
Sir?
With the Patrick Schuler guy?
Yes, 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 he, yeah, he worked, yeah, these guys are right, we communicate, our business, we communicate back and forth by phone all day, you know, we don't enjoy clerical staff, but we all want to go about that, it makes more sense, the way we do business to not, not have secretaries answer the phone.
You got this in the budget, are you okay with it?
No, here's what I'm going to do, no, we don't have a budget, but what I want you to do, I'll ask Karen, she has a mind, pull you, you can either pull it out of training or maybe travel part, yeah, we, we'll impact the budget, we'll be good, we'll, we'll cover that.
No, I didn't, I disagree with that, because we have a cell phone line item at the airport, and I'm going to have to adjust everybody that y'all through, their department, to have a cell phone line done, because of our payroll system, it has to be done that way, because it's taxable, so I'm going to bring back an estimate for each line item for you to approve, and we're going to have to transfer it from somewhere, that's the appropriate way to do it, and that's the way I want to do it.
Currently, the, the payment for cell phones, the county phone, is coming out of which line item?
It comes out of, uh, Department six ninety-six, uh-
For county-wise cell phones.
For county-wise cell phones and air cards and all.
That works from there to IT to make them a line item?
Not all of it, because I have to have the line items there for the airports, like, my laptop has an air card, Laura's has an air card, whoever has laptops and goes out of town for schools has the air cards, so that's the only way we communicate like that, but I'll get that fixed.
But overall, it's going to be a wash for the money, the cell, the county's cell phone price versus the staffing.
Well, no, we'll have to find extra money.
Our department will, I think we're going to take that one, but I don't know about any of that.
We haven't got all this completely, this deciding who's getting what, when, and I'm going to wait before y'all, y'all get all of it settled, because I don't want to come here every two weeks and have y'all just line items for phone bills, I want an estimate.
Phillips says, uh, I place this on item number thirteen on the agenda, do you agree that's going to pay off the difference between the two?
Yeah, so, the question's going on that, on that, but it's kind of, this one's kind of-
Yeah, and Laura, you wish to say something?
Yeah, ever that cell phone allowance policy was approved, it was not budgeted anywhere, the intent was to use part of the money that we pay bill from to cover that cost, but now, people didn't have it for reading one or whatever, using their cell phone, and never got a money cell phone, so that's going to have to be initiative to address that budget, because there's, it's not budgeted.
So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this? George, I think you heard the question.
Well, I, I know when we get down to the, uh, speech request, uh, in there, it says that these people are going to be available for emergencies twenty-four-seven, if we're in this, uh, with these, uh, when they get a cell phone, when we start paying for a cell phone, you're, you're, are available to the county twenty-four-seven.
Oh, yes, so when a telephone call hits, uh, you know, a telephone call is kept, and servers go down at two AM? That's what we-
I, I just want to get on and make sure that, you know, we're going, there's going to be some new things over here in the, the new policy that you're putting out right here, so make sure that everybody's aware that when we do, that you are-
You're in.
Yeah, you're in, you're twenty-four-seven.
Twenty-four-seven for me, right.
Wow, twenty years, I, I don't think I've, I've, I've been on the cell phone, maybe ten days.
Yeah, yeah, we don't save all that for the last night, because then we get to discuss everything on the line, and this, this is going to work, yeah, way to life. And, and he's going to have money for it, obviously, I don't have a lot of money.
And they've got to have a valid number and all that stuff, so that's, that's, that's it, you say, okay?
I'll make a motion for you, I'll say.
Alright, we have motion, Commissioner Phillips, second, Commissioner Paul, if any of you is interested, all in favor say aye. Alright, George, uh-
Name is your turn.
Item number six, uh, to discuss, consider, I say, mail server migration to Microsoft, Microsoft three sixty-five government.
So, since two thousand and one, we have hosted and maintained redundant mail servers at the county, and when we, um, went through our budget hearing, we discussed and approved funding to get away from that, it's time to not do that anymore, it's time to not do the care and feeding with the hardware platform, it's time to not buy a bunch of hardware and worry about telephone calls when it gets on, we want to host it in cloud, we want to host it with Microsoft, we want to use the only email provider and C G S compliant, that passes muster with FBI and Department of Public Safety, the security, if you'll take that page and flip it over, you'll see a list, a parcel list, of some of the agencies and departments that currently use Microsoft as their host, would anyone else like to copy of it? So, this is simply to let you know what we're doing, partly, we may require a workshop, because what we're going to do is change some of the way we're doing business, we never had the capability in the past to do e-discovery, you know, we didn't, we weren't automated tools to manage e-discovery and such things, and, um, so this product has a way for the individual department to put a, uh, to put a legal hold on email, the size of email boxes is fifty-gig, so what that means is, for about two years' worth of data per user, with a legal hold, we will essentially archive it, now, since two thousand and one, we've had an archiver that goes back two years, so the good news is, we have a lot of our emails for two years, the bad news is, we also have a lot of our emails for two years, so it's all discovered, so that should be at, I believe, discretion of the department head, I talked to the DA last week about this, um, she thinks it's a great idea, that we have these tools and do this, but I think we just need to have a sit-down workshop, maybe just a casual meeting, to make sure every department head is on the same page and realize the migration is going to, there are going to be changes, we have opportunities to do things differently, and we also may not need to pay for an archive, there's about ten K difference, twelve K difference, having a full archiver and not having a full archive, and again, the reason why is the e-discovery tools allows legal hold on the individual boxes, so, having said that, and also during the migration, I'll be sure there will be temporary outages, temporary issues, so that's where I'm at with that, so any, any questions on that, if what I'm going to do, we're going to send out an email to give you a schedule, so when we're going to start doing the migration, so if there's any interruption, you'll see what, what we're doing and why we're doing it.
What do you have any questions, I don't know that I could ask a question that-
I don't know, I'm like you, I'm kind of lost on that, but if you can get, get back to the stories, you know, the way we're storing now, the way you're going to store it then, and what does that have to do with all the records?
So-
Kind of go back through that, I know.
Well, let's say that the DA wants to put a legal hold on her things, and Laura he does not, you know, what if, you know, sheriff's department has a different set of, uh, well, let's call retention, for lack of a better term, we'll have more flexibility that way, today, we archive everything for two, no matter what, we can continue to do that.
Yeah, but we don't have a good reason to do that.
Well, at the time, we thought we did, and we can, that's another reason why we often-
And the DA, and the DA in the office kind of told us what?
Is, you know, let me just say, we archived for two years for the minutes, but now, I think now is the time to revisit, and get input from these department heads, and what they feel, what their retention policies are, and try to adapt to change, so we can do what they would like.
Rebecca, what is, uh, is there a law on that?
Yeah, there's going to be requirement for record retention, that I don't know it off the top of my head, I'm assuming George spoke to, um, Judge Wiley and not, I mean, I didn't talk to him about it, um, but I can reach out to my counterpart to get a record retention schedule for each department, and we can go from there, but I, I'm thinking he's telling us it's less than what we're doing, which means we can help with that.
I guess we, this city's, you know, a couple of other counties right here, we need a couple, they seem like they're all got a, and, and, and you could probably even leave, you know, focus there and tell us that, we need a workshop?
It's a whole seminar topic this year for DAs, so I'm sure we can get some-
Maybe, I don't know, people know about this already, but I didn't, I didn't see his, I didn't see, I didn't see Daryl's video. Smart guy.
Hey, see, you're talking, we've got it right here at home.
I know, I know Kaufman, Kaufman and Steve Dallas and, and, uh, all do it, so I mean, that's a, it sounds like a good deal.
So what will this new service cost us? Um, we budgeted, this, this going to cost us about twenty thousand a year, if we do a, a two-year archiver, it's going to be more, but if the e-discovery tools, including legal hold, fit for us and do what we need to, you know, we won't need the archive. So, basically, in an exchange environment, counties, sorry, counties, um, that run in-house or run premise exchange pay that, they pay a guy to manage an exchange environment, you know, and they pay for the hardware platform, our goal is to, you know, if we can, we can forecast our expenditures out over a five to ten-year period, much, very easily, because we know what our costs are going to be, we don't have to think, oh my God, I got to buy servers next year, that ends, that all goes away, so we'll manage the exchange environment in the cloud, without having to buy all sorts of picture stuff, and so-
Well, and they keep up the cloud, too, I mean, they do all the changing and the-
Well, we manage the exchange environment where it is, but it's big, you know?
Yeah, right.
Right, so, example, the DA would have control over, um, e-discovery for her area, and county clerk and so on, so.
Mike saying?
Okay, I'm going to watch your pleasure on George's request on this.
So it's going to cost us twenty thousand a year?
Yeah, we budgeted for it, when, when we met last, uh, July, we discussed it, and we all agreed to do it, man, so I'm just kind of letting you guys know where we're at, and it's right on the corner.
So this is just more of an update, do you need?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Allen, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Shane seconds the motion, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, oh, thank you, George, item number seven, again, it's from George, and that is to discuss and consider signing a contract with AT&T to install fiber optic voice and data access to the Terrell sub courthouse, and I know this has been a, a problem for years.
Years, years and years and years, the copper, I mean, basically, AT&T doesn't want to cut their dividends, so they're not spending any money on copper, not work, so what are you going to do, so for years, as long as I've been here, copper from the CO to that building has been a mess, you know, a good stiff wind and rain, we had issues. So anyway, so our goal is, we're going to go forward, we're going to go put a twenty by twenty fiber into the bill, I think we have our belt foundation director here, and he can testify to this as well, and, and, and the reason why he's here is he has generously, generously agreed to help pay for this, so-
It's even better. Payroll better.
So it-
And get the city of Terrell picking up a year. On companies meetings.
Looking for deep, tell them that, I'll keep going.
So we, um, we had a, we had a, some options, we believed twenty by twenty at this time would be, would be sufficient, you know, we did all due diligence, we looked at every opportunity, we looked at other, uh, providers using that lack, that local exchange carrier, we actually looked at Tele National putting in, uh, fiber, they were still, that last mile still belongs to AT&T, so it made no sense to do that, we looked at putting in a tower, but there were issues with, the idea was a tower to connect back to here the way we do with so many other locations, and of course, the issues there became, and Steve can testify to this, the issues there became the airport right away, planes, FAA, and so on, but, you know, we went down the road, we did, you know, we looked at a lot of opportunities, and we believed, so we might fund it from AT&T, it's the way to go, we gave the contract to our DA, she's put her information tour on it, so I think we're, um, we're good enough.
Okay, I like that motion. Alright, we have a motion, Commissioner Shane, to approve the request, and second from-
I got, I got a question, and we have a question from, on this, on this question, which one of these?
So, it is the sum of, is the sum of, of the twenty eighty, add that, and then you take that, and you, and you, and sixty-two percent, so it's the sum of that, plus sixty-two percent of that, so it's seven forty-nine twenty cents.
All in favor? All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Those, oh, alright, thank you very much, I'd like to move now, uh, I should have done this earlier, but item number eleven, we'll skip to it, uh, discuss and consider and approve an interlocal cooperation agreement, law agreement between amendment number one, agreement, amendment number one between Kaufman County and the city of, uh, Terrell, Rebecca, do you have something on that?
No, the gentleman had any, any further on that, Mr. Pulster was nice enough to sit down and meet with us, and I think he's changed, I mean, everything that we requested, City of Terrell's done a great job reviewing it, Mike caught a last minute little typo, but I don't have any, any response to it, no objection.
Everything is, is legally, was been, that you had in terms of that?
I think we have a solid agreement, I think it meets the terms that you guys wanted, and, um, it meets the bond package.
Mayor, do you have any?
No, sir, uh, no, I just thank y'all for the cooperation that we, we shared, and I think you can see that, uh, we're moving things right along, and, and, uh, this is just going to, this is just going to keep things going, people, I think in the county should be excited about, you know, all of the roadwork that's going on, and we're going to be doing this if it work for y'all there.
My can answer, we've got technical questions, but I think it's all pretty simple. Do you have to answer any questions on it, or, um, I've got it here with me, so I can take you through every detail of it, kind of whatever, whatever detail you want, I'm ready for it.
You might want to just give a brief summation of what, what it is we're moving in one medium.
Sure, yeah, and, uh, I'm, I'm being high-tech, actually, uh, put a little summary on my phone here, so I'll, I'll kind of roll this into the record for you, if you have any, I'll, I'll just run through this, alright, so, uh, the city's asking for action today because the city text off pass through contract, uh, has a twenty-seven deadline for the FM one forty-eight north project, so just for, uh, uh, reference, that's north of Bucky's, okay, on, on FM one forty-eight, going from the south side of Spur five fifty-seven, all the way up, uh, over the bridge, past Apache Trail, just about right up to, um, uh, Dr. Isaac's veterinary clinic, okay, that's the section that we nicknamed FM one forty-eight north, so, we've got a twenty seventeen deadline for that project, uh, it's critical that we're able to continue engineering on that based on a third cut financial plan, right now, we're stalled out in our engineering, because we need to make sure that we are, are very clear on the financial, uh, uh, amount of money that we can put onto the project, because you know, as, as you do here, you're going to engineer it one way, if you've got one amount of money, you're going to engineer it a different way, if you've got a different amount of money, so this gives us point of clarity, to make sure we're locked down on where we're going with, um, a financial plan, there's no change in, uh, pass-through funds from text dot coming to the county, that was a discussion item in the fall, and this agreement completely leaves that issue the way it already is, okay, the current agreement, um, uh, stipulates a way of calculating, as we receive pass-through money back from text dot as a city, a percentage of that to go to the county, and that provision is completely unchanged in this agreement, and I know it was an important point, and it's, it's just simply no change, there's also no change in the total amount of funding from the county bond program coming to City of Terrell projects, this just rearranges City of Terrell projects, uh, based on the total amount that was already earmarked for Terrell, John Pulster's big spreadsheets, and what was originally taken out to the voters, the exact same dollar amount for City of Terrell projects, it allows us to complete the construction of our frontage road and the FM one forty-eight north project in accordance with all of the text dot requirements, we've been, uh, meeting with, uh, text dot quite a bit about that, so now to get to the specifics, uh, a million dollars was earmarked, uh, originally for the FM nine eighty-six, that's the poetry road bypass. Uh, a million dollars was earmarked, uh, originally for the FM nine eighty-six. That's the poetry road bypass. Your consultants, the two hired to do your county transportation plan, have done such a good job with the advanced planning for the poetry road bypass and that project is so far out in the future that we felt like instead of spending a million dollars of, um, uh, pass-through funds on an advanced planning project, we'd be much better off making sure we could fully construct the FM one forty-eight north project. So we take a million dollars from a planning project, we say thank you to the county for the county transportation plan, which did the job we wanted done and we put that money onto the FM one forty-eight north project. Then, uh, one of the other major projects in Terrell in the county bond program was a project not to be led by the city, but to be led by the county commissions. And that's your USA two oh five FM one forty-eight project where we cross the railroad tracks in Terrell. And that's a difficult project. Right now, um, you've already hired, you've already taken action as a commissioners' court to hire an engineer to work on that project. We've done some good work with them and preliminary states are looking at what are all our, our steps there. Uh, John Pulcher's been working on that, introduce to you. The, uh, engineering analysis thus far is that project, uh, could either be gigantic and completely outside of our means if we moved the railroad track or something like that. Uh, on the other hand, we probably have a pretty good, uh, stage one project that we can work with text dot on to take, um, about an eight million dollars worth of work and, uh, partner with text dot and complete a great project. So what was originally in the county bond program? Originally in the county bond program, we had two point six million dollars on that project. So we felt like since we're doing John's faith-based, uh, engineering on that project anyway, um, what we're gonna do is take a million dollars from that intersection, put it on the FM one forty-eight north project because we're obliged with text dot to do the FM one forty-eight north project first. That way we can say, text dot, you did our work on FM one forty-eight north, we delivered it, you wanted us to do that one first and so now we're just doing these projects in order. Now we'll still have, uh, one point six million dollars from the county bond program to do work at that intersection, it's, uh, two point six million and we'll be able to go forward to text dot and say, great, we did the first job first, now help us find the additional money to do the second job second, okay? Um, so those are the major points. Then the other point is to take the, um, um, second issuance and put language in there related to the second issuance. We had a lot of conversation about how do you phrase this correctly? It turns out that the existing agreement between, uh, the city of Kaufman and Kaufman County does this correctly. And so what Rebecca looked over for us was wording that basically says, if you as a commissioners' court so choose to do a twenty sixteen issuance or a future second issuance of your county bond program funds, which you're already planning to do, but isn't when you decide to do that at your sole discretion, um, then here's the dollar amount that's earmarked for projects in the city of Terrell. And that gives us some clear cut, uh, wording so that we can do our financial plan. That number was always intended to be, uh, a total of five point seven million dollars. That five point seven million dollars is in your, uh, amendment agreement and that basically just tells us that whenever you make your own choice to issue, uh, we know how much money from that issuance will come to the city of Terrell. And we think that's important for us to make sure we can get our engineering proceeding. So that's a full overview about what's in there specifically and again, I'll be, we've got copies all here if you wanna go through details of it.
What, and I know this is probably hard to estimate, what kind of timeframe are you looking at?
We are obliged to complete the FM one forty-eight project in, uh, twenty seventeen based on our contract with text dot to receive those pass-through monies back. And if you cut us loose today, then we'll be able to get engineering done, uh, this summer and, uh, get approvals, uh, from text dot in the fall and be able to, uh, get that project up and running sometime late fall.
That's the critical thing is, is if we don't get this done in time to demand, then we'll lose our pass-through refunds.
We gotta take advantage of every one of those, both of them. It gets, we've got this ball rolling, now we've gotta keep it moving. We, we can't stop and, and if we do, we lose.
I think the really important thing too is that the citizens in the county are seeing not just this project, but other projects. They're seeing that, that bond that they voted is turning into transportation projects and it's been rare. Let me, uh, this is related Rebecca, so don't get on me, okay? Uh, the, I've had contact from one or two of the other cities that we're working with. Kaufman, Jimmy, you may have had this discussion with Mike. They are, we still have twenty-six million dollars that we've not issued. And we had originally discussed issuing those, not this year, uh, but maybe in twenty seventeen. Uh, I've discussed with George Wiliford and Tom Pollan about the advisability, also with John Pulcher about the advisability of going ahead and issuing those bonds this year for two or three reasons. One, uh, it, the interest rates are still fairly low, uh, and people that are in this business say that's not gonna, you know, it's gonna go up just a matter of time. And, uh, but the other reason is there's some projects like I think one forty-one, one fifty, or one fifty more, uh, that it's ready to go, I think, but we don't have the money available to, uh, to help fund it and it needs to be. So do you, how, if, if the court decided to do this and we decided to sell those remaining bonds, how would that, uh, affect, anything you guys have one more?
It's a, it's a tremendous, uh, issue for us. If, if you do that in, uh, calendar year sixteen, then you'll receive a hug from the mayor of Terrell, okay? That's what we need, okay?
That's a good case.
That, that, that gets us on track to be able to do what, uh, Commissioner just said. We, we wanna deliver that project, make sure you get your pass-through money back, okay? Um, and, and if you issue, uh, in this calendar year, we're a hundred percent set to do that. If you don't issue it this year, then we're gonna have a variety of obstacles that we'll have to get over on our own uh, to, to try to get that, try to thank for an extension from text dot, try to do something that I wouldn't want us to recommend to you, okay? So I'm, I'm highly encouraged to do that in this calendar year.
That'd be something the commissioners' court, if I wanna get to get to work, talk about the advantages and disadvantages that there are in, in doing that. The hug from Al, I think it's way better to have you reconsider.
One of them come at all and make, if, if we do move forward with the twenty-six million bond program, it's gonna help precinct four, precinct two, precinct one, precinct three. It's helping the whole county. It's not just a City of Terrell issue.
Are we maybe just only one more issuance or can we split?
We can, uh, we initially had three in there, but it doesn't mean that we, I mean, we can still do three or we can do all one.
I just, we might be missing that foot from our treasurer and our auditor about, you know, is it feasible to issue? Yeah, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, we need workshop.
And a lot of it ties into the economy, interest rates, what all that happens to them, you know. Something we need to discuss and I just try and kinda get a feedback from the cities about how they felt about it, so.
We, I'll label.
We, uh, it'll make a lot of positive difference in, in that, speed up the project.
Oh, with my talking with bond counsel and legal counsel and Tom, uh, it seems that it's easier to do one bigger issue than spread it out over the next four years, uh, if you stay on your, your fees. So that's something to keep in mind, your legal fees, your selling fees and all that, bond counsel fees and your issues.
What we do is get all the players together so we can workshop, we can talk through that. Anyway, uh, we discussed and discussed this item out on that. Uh, item number eleven, do I have a motion considering the interlocal agreement? Mr. Shane makes that motion. Commissioner Rizalik seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Go to the public. Thank you guys for being here. You're welcome. We'd like to. And, uh, we're gonna move back down to the other page. We skipped around a little bit, so we'll go back to the first page and, uh, this is item number eight. Pam asked that, she's not here today, she's at a, attending a meeting, uh, to discuss and consider applying for a sheriff's department multi-juridic jurisdictional SWAT vehicle through a grant from the criminal justice commission of the governor's office. By applying as a multi-jurisdictional team, we can apply up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We approved this, uh, resolution or this, uh, grant application last meeting, uh, for eighty thousand dollars. But Pam has had discussions with the governor's office, uh, and as far as what might be a better fifth and if we involve and Sheriff can jump in here too, if we involve other jurisdictions in the county making it multi-jurisdictional, we have a chance of getting probably a more, uh, or a better equipped vehicle, uh, up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
You know, all of these grants, you know, it's like talking about the bond, when you partner with somebody and bring more people in, they're much more separate. Uh, I talked to Pam about this and this would be, you know, a vehicle we need. What we've got now is one that we actually rigged out, uh, sixteen years ago that had been with juvenile probation that erect and we put that back in. It's got a lot of miles on it. It's not designed for that. Uh, we just had this in county line a week or so ago where, you know, we've, we've got a shootout with a guy down there. Luckily it was in eastern county, uh, so we didn't have to do with this there helping.
Did I get a SWAT vehicle?
I guess I did. And, uh, this would be, I think Pam has got letters from all of the, uh, agencies or a lot of government that were participating in this. It's also the SWAT and also the ballistic shields where, you know, we couldn't, so that's the main thing and, uh, you know, that's just kinda where we're at in, in our history right now and these things are going to happen. I thought we had plenty, you know, here that we did buy a long time studying, but I don't know that. It's, uh, a different world over there and, uh, we have to be prepared. It's like our commander, you know, we, we, uh, take that out when anybody's got something that's gonna be up for a long time. It's very, very helpful, but we got communication, we got cameras where we can watch an area and all that. I think we, uh, I should go to the, the two hundred and forty thousand on there.
And just because we applied for it, then we're gonna get.
And we already applied for that.
Well, she was in the process of it and by talking.
Discovered in the.
Yeah, that the folks that do this say you'd probably have a better chance if you involved their agency.
We're gonna involve all the, maybe the people that are signing up the nine one one with us?
Are we gonna involve all the people that maybe dispatch, dispatch on the nine one one?
We're gonna, uh, go, any, any agency in the county that wants any police agents, we obviously, we're gonna, we, we're label and they're, you know, they're signing them.
And would it be our, our SWAT team basically if we did that with other?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, I'm, I'm agreeing with them, I'm just, I'm just asking.
We've got a multi-jurisdictional SWAT team now.
Yeah.
Nobody actually has enough people in this county to have a full SWAT team. So we've got, remember, we actually, uh, run it, uh, we got the commander who works for us and some of us, but these other cities have proven people do that.
Okay.
So we have to do everything in a kind of cooperative effort, but, you know, anything at all, because nobody has enough people.
Work for me.
Okay, what's your pleasure on item number eight? We have a motion on Commissioner Phillips and a second on Commissioner Allen. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Go to the public. All right, thank you. Moving now back to item number nine and that's Ms. Ratner, our tax assessor. Rebecca, to give us our monthly report and I notice we got a big rollback.
We did, we have a lot of rollbacks. You're correct. I'll talk about that in just a moment. Uh, this month we collected eleven million three hundred and fifty-three thousand, hundred and fifty-two dollars. That was split ten point two million for M and I O and one point one million for INS. And in addition, we collected a hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars in going for taxes this month. Taxes collected year-to-date for, uh, just general fund, twenty-six million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars plus four hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars in back taxes, uh, year-to-date. Now, the rollbacks are, uh, well, I'll just finish up the road and bridge, come back to the rollbacks last. The road and bridge collected, uh, this month is one point nine million and year-to-date, four point six million with fifty-six thousand in, uh, over six thousand in Texas road bridge. For the rollbacks, we had an enormous amount of rollbacks this month. We had, uh, two parcels that equaled, uh, seven point three acres in Terrell. We had fifty-five point eight acres in the Heartland area. We had, uh, four acres in Kemp, just on one seventy-five. We had, uh, four parcels in forty that equaled sixty-two acres. And then we had three, uh, one parcel on forty that was fourteen acres and two parcels on forty that was over sixty-one acres.
We got a lot.
So we have a lot of them. If anybody has particular interest, I do have, managed to show you where they are. Uh, I've got one copy that I have available. Any questions?
It's good to see though we got a rollback, cause that's been, that's the development.
We'll definitely have a next rollback.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good part.
Yeah, well, I give you the benefits already.
But that'd be acres that you'd almost think if they were.
I'd pay them, I'd pay them with a SWAT vehicle.
It'll, it'll increase the development.
Oh, yeah. But they go back five years from now.
And while we're talking about that, I know all of you, when you're traveling around your precinct, you see where things may be happening, you know, but people may not even, you know.
Know about it.
Price district, they don't know about it. Every time you might not know about it, so it's always good to, uh, let them know when you next will let them check it out. In fact, I'm gonna talk to you.
There's something happening on everywhere over there. I just wanted to know.
Just go over.
It's going.
That's great report. Do I have a motion to accept the commissioners' report and a part of the collector's report? I have a motion from Commissioner, uh, Allen and a second from Commissioner Rizalik. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. That's good report. Item number ten is from my treasurer, Mr. Oldfield, who present and accept the treasurer's monthly report for the month of twenty sixteen.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners. Uh, the January treasurer's report is the general fund had a beginning balance of a million, two forty-two, four seventy-four, twenty-one. It had receipts of eighteen million, two thirty-three, over fifty-five point seventy-four. Disbursements of four million, six sixty-nine, fifty-three, thirty-three. So we have an ending balance of fourteen million, eight fourteen, five seventy-six, sixty-two. Again, uh, as, as is our pattern, all of that money is on deposit at American National Bank. Our collected balance, interest rate is thirty-five basis points. And further in the report, you can see that we have, um, road bond INS of a million, eighty-five thousand, eight thirteen, seventy-three. And we have the, um, unspent road bond funds of fourteen million, four seventy-three, fifty-seven, eighty-four. And on the lower left, you can see that for the month, for the general fund and for the, these other funds listing, we have total interest of ten thousand, four twenty-two, fifty-two. There is interest income that gets allocated to other funds, uh, that doesn't appear there. And, you know, the next two pages or the pages listing the, uh, different, uh, funds of the county that are accumulated into the, um, pooled cash, the general fund and page, uh, next to the cash receipts and disbursements shows the, uh, funds that are standalone bank accounts. The federal seized asset cash fund is one of those that's listed there at the top of that page. And then you each have your road and bridge cash reports. Uh, the last two pages we've included are the pledge security listing that we received from American National Bank. Uh, that is the collateral that the bank, um, pledges against these cash deposits as our security. And I think, uh, in looking forward, following the discussions, uh, in discussing about issuing additional road bonds, I think, uh, an important component of that will be how we can collaboratively develop an investment plan to invest those funds so that we, uh, offset the interest expense that we're going to carry to the extent that we can. Last week I attended the, um, investments training seminar with TACF in San Marcos. So I'll have my current investment officer, Detective Detective Daniel, with our partner, mine. And I think, uh, we are also required to, um, reaffirm, re-adopt our, um, investment policy annually. So I think on the next commissioners' court meeting, we'll get the, um, policy on the agenda and see if y'all want to approve the policy again to refresh everyone's memory. and see if y'all want to approve the policy again, to refresh everyone's memory. I pulled it out of a folder this morning, we'll scan that and get it sent to all of you on an email, so that you can see the policy, and then we'll look at current investment practices, and see if there's any changes that the court would like to see to the policy. Thank you, gentlemen.
We don't have a, we don't have a board.
Board.
We have a board.
Right. Is what required of that?
No, it's not required.
It's all required.
The last class that it did with y'all, everybody went home with a man, I don't know why, but that was, that's what it was, the treasurer came from, they had, I mean, the Rockwall has committed. The Rockwalls can be done, you know, they're not, they're not used at the moment, they're kind of, said to Norman, I know the county judge over there, sitting with him in the class, he texted treasurer, the ass could put it in a committee, because he didn't know it. I asked ours.
Were you there?
Oh, yeah, you were.
And I thought it was required.
I don't know, you might think about that and give us your thoughts on it, if you think it's a good idea, and things are good, I mean, it's not involved with necessarily the committees, but it's private individuals and the county judge and the auditor.
Right. The...
Maybe higher.
When counties have boards, they will typically get an outside person.
That's what I mean.
And that, in the discussions that occur in the meetings, the purpose of that outside board member is to have someone that has access to the Bloomberg and other data systems that would cost the county eight or ten thousand dollars, have access to perhaps, and, and so I think if, if we go and we get more active with investing, and we're trying to develop something where we're reducing our negative arbitrage on fourteen million of bonds here and another tranche of sixteen million.
Let's do a workshop on this for later.
Well, I guess the biggest thing...
I agree with you, yeah, I agree with you.
I just thought that maybe there was some fields that we're missing on investment that we could be using that made more money, and we don't have any help on it, so we don't know.
Do I have a motion on item number ten, Commissioner Shane, Commissioner Allen, seconds? All in favor, say aye. Those folks, thank you very much. Page here is, I'll pass this to Commissioner James, which is pretty, pretty copies of the same. All right, we've considered eleven and twelve, now down to number thirteen, discuss and consider, many of the cellular telephone allowance policy and procedures. Commissioner Phillips, I would ask that this be placed on the agenda, and it sounded like it was a good reason to have that earlier in the session.
Well, yeah, George had some concern, I had some concern, and HR had some concern, and everybody had a little bit of concern, but I guess anytime we do something new, maybe it takes a little while to get it unwrapped and get it working, or two. I noticed, like me personally, I kept having problems, my guys texting and doing the wrong things with the phone, and I discovered that, guess what, they were all using their own phones, so I just get along with them, didn't wait my phone. And then HR had some concern over, over the way we drafted the policy, and we drafted the policy not leaving road and bridge out, but just saying road and bridge can continue using their phones. But I chose not to keep it using, and so what I personally want to do is strike that part and say that road and bridge is allowed to be in the phone policy, because it, they aren't the phone policy. And then we want to get to the line items, two on all the, on all the, the way that everybody's gonna pay for it. Like road and bridge, we have a phone line item, we have a telecommunications line item, and of course, I spend a lot more land on those phones than I'm fixing them, paying on two people just having a phone. So I don't have a line item problem, but I know the other departments do, so we're gonna have to do something about that.
But you will, because I'm gonna change that line item.
Do what?
It has to be changed to match the pay outside, but I'll pay money to move around.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have plenty of money, because I'm, you know, I did away with fifteen phones, and I'm only gonna allow two people to have, have money on the phone. All the rest of them, I punch in, we'll tell them where you're going to be. But, you know, I just thought that it'd be, be good discussion and make sure that we're on the right track, and scratch out the road and bridge on the, on the, I think, first page of policy.
First page, while it's progress.
Right, and scratch out road and bridge, because, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it wasn't the purpose of the policy to eliminate them, it was the purpose of the policy just to allow them to keep using them, and maybe I misunderstood that, but we will change it, so, that's my premise.
Yeah, and I'm glad to put up, there are, you know, you've got unintended consequences that happen sometimes, and I think that may be an example of this. Are we ready to take action on this today, or maybe something?
I think, yeah, I think specifically I have any concerns about the policy, I think the policy is great. The reason the committee met and were creating this policy, and the reason that that sentence was put in there, because there was a consensus that they had just transferred all the road and bridge over to new cell phone policies, new contracts...
Contracts, radio.
Of radio. So the concern was canceling all that, and the intent for road and bridge was to transfer it all over to the radio system, and the sheriff's department got the new radio system. So that was the intent for that one sentence, because we have, now we have two policies on cell phone, and there's no clarification as to who's on what. So that was the intent for that sentence about not, this is not applied to road and bridge, because on that committee, which Commissioner, I believe you sat on, we were not going to transfer any road and bridge over.
Well, that's what I said, I said, and I said, but I didn't intend them to be excluded from the policy.
They were intended to have a choice.
Yeah, I mean, it never intended to say, okay, this is a lockdown feature, and we're just gonna shut road and bridge out, that's not, that wasn't my intention.
No, I'm not saying that that was the intent, I'm saying that they weren't going to give the cell phone allowance, because they were going to give the radios, therefore they'll, you know, need to pay them for cell phone allowance, and they're gonna have the radios, is my understanding.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay my road and bridge phones, only my assistant and phone. I have no, I have no intention to pay all these guys a phone. Do what?
That's the reason that sentence was put in there, because we have two policies, so we need to specify who, who is still under what policy.
Yeah, I think everybody should follow under the phone policy, everybody in whole camp.
But there's two different ones, we have a county issued cell phone policy, and now we have a cell phone allowance policy.
And the cell phone what?
The cell phone allowance policy, and then we have a policy that addresses county issued cell phones.
Yeah.
There's two different ones.
I know, but it's all the being the head.
So there's no specification as to who gets what.
Well, I wish you got any comments.
Yeah, I mean, it was put in place to try to, because like she stated, that we had just upgraded all of the road and bridge, everybody had upgraded phones, just signed all the new contracts for all that, and of course, if we went in and canceled all those, that would not, and, and it was ultimately put in place to save the county money, but at the rate we're going, and adding people to stipend, and adding people to stipend, I don't know that we're going to achieve what we set out to do.
Not going to save money.
No.
No, I think so.
Not at the rate we're going.
There were several people that ever had a county issued cell phone, they chose not to carry two phones, but now they're paying them to have a phone, now everybody wants a stipend.
Aaron, that's, that'd be our decision to decide whether we're gonna pay qualify, you know, to be on call twenty-four seven, because that was the idea, I mean, if you're on call twenty-four seven, you have a cell phone that you're being paid to leave home to be available.
But in essence, it's cheaper for us to pay for the county cell phone than giving the seventy-five dollars stipend.
It was, and there was a lot of work behind the scenes that, and that was the...
The all clerical work.
And not just that, just there's, there's hard costs associated with having to replace broken phones.
Insurance, you gotta pay them.
And they have come across several people that weren't even using the phone that was issued.
Yeah.
Never having authority to the personal phone.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good, it's a good system, it's a good plan, but there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed.
I actually had numbered, we had numbered pool on what was waste, what we found was actually just waste.
Big waste.
And it was, I think, like thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars a month in phones that weren't even being used.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's the trouble that I had when I went to town, you know, I had road and bridge, I had to carry the county phone, that and my precinct, they were all carrying their own phone. I said, what's the deal, what if they just forward your phone, they leave it at home?
Well, for lack of a better solution, what, everybody's suggesting workshops and whatever, but it needs to be hammered out, because there's not clear, I should say, not clear definition as to what, what is where, and we kind of knew it would be a work in progress, but it's turning out to be every other week, something has to be changed.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna end up having to do, we're gonna set something in the policy and make it happen, whether the timeline and the fact...
Yeah, I'll leave it, you said, leave it alone. Yeah.
We've, we've also had meetings with another set of people that believe seventy-five dollars is not enough, they want a hundred and fifty.
And I believe Lori's done some research on that, and found out that our seventy-five dollars stipend is quite generous.
It's high. No, it, it's high, and it's, it's, it's almost potentially high, I mean, I think we discussed it in the thing, we said, look, we're not gonna try to get everybody to come back and start rigging things, we're only gonna give you forty dollars.
And that's, we have two different levels, and I think that's...
I know, but I meant, I meant for people that need a smartphone versus just to rig their phone. And basically, the rigger phone probably weren't intended for very few people, and that is mainly road and bridge, because we wanted to say, okay, I wanna give a guy, you know, just, just to be able to text him a message and say, do this, you know, but I can put it in and require them to have a telephone, I mean, they need...
It would probably help to...
They need a phone number for me to call them, if they're gonna not chill at work.
It would really probably help us budget-wise and HR, if when somebody puts it on the agenda, they say seventy-five, or they're forty, so we know exactly what you approved.
They've all always been putting the seventy-five, they're usually putting the seventy-five.
Yeah, see?
Yeah, all right, let's move along on this. What would you like to do, is there something, maybe we could have a committee, rather than a workshop, and have the committee come back and report to the court what the findings are, and maybe have two commissioners serve on that, along with Lisa and Lori and Karen?
Yeah, that's fine, but, but, but I'm not gonna, not road and bridge that if they want to change.
Well, yeah, with the same, you can communicate with them.
Yeah, this, this is not what it was intended, I mean, you know.
But I don't think we're gonna correct that here today, I mean, I think it's a valuable organization, and that's, is, would that, would you put that in form for motion?
Yeah, okay, we'd like the motion to have a workshop.
Well, a workshop or a committee?
I'd do a committee on, maybe do a committee on...
With HR and purchasing and the auditor.
Yep.
And we're in two commissioners, right?
Yep.
Do we need to add one of the other parties that I brought up, the other tier?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have a JP.
JP is kind of like the sheriff's, well, they're paying for it for some of their own funds.
But it still needs to be put in somehow, awarded, where it's all...
It's still county money, and y'all approve the budget, so it has to be done that way, so we have a budget for it.
So, would, so...
We can do that, we can have a...
And which commissioner would like to serve with, you're gonna be the chairman, is that right?
That's it. You're gonna be the chairman, I might let y'all talk.
So would a commissioner like to volunteer to, Jimmy?
Yeah, I'll...
Okay, okay, so, buddy, get that down, Laurie?
Yes, sir, I do.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Shane, Mr. Shane, second's motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and whenever you guys can get back together and talk about it, and get the JP folks involved in it, that'd be a wonderful thing.
So do we need to make a motion table? Yes.
Well, I think the committee needs to be...
The committee was motion on this.
Yeah, that's the way I thought it was. All righty, item number fourteen is to discuss and consider purchasing four new dump trucks for precinct four road and bridge with the repurchase option utilizing the interlocal purchasing system, KIPs, contract number zero two dash one oh two three one four. Lisa?
Yes, sir. Lisa, Commissioner Allen, as you brought, you have gotten with Mack Truck, you wanna do a buyback on four, so the initial impact financially be approximately forty-one thousand, seven hundred if after, after buyback, correct?
Yeah, we'll do delivery, we'll do them sometime next month.
Okay. So all we need to do is give them a purchase order cut for these, and they send overalls, but did you get the copies of all the buyback contracts?
I think I did.
Okay. No, I have, I have copies.
I have.
All right, what's your pleasure on item number fourteen, this is what we've done with other precincts, and any, pretty much, make a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Allen and a second from Commissioner Rizalik, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those folks. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider awarding bid number sixteen dash zero two trucking hauling road materials.
This is brought forth from Commissioner Rizalik for his team, he said he doesn't have the manpower all the time to be able to take advantage of taking, to get some of these materials that are either donated or in that, in a donated type, surplus type, and you don't always have the people to turn loose, so he wanted to, to get some boats that could be available to do that throughout county. And we, we only had three trucking companies that actually responded, so pretty much have your choose of, choice of all three, there is a primary, secondary, and an alternate, but like I said, they're for the most part local and going to draw up a hat, certain different options, I think he had me bid it out with either per mile or...
Or low.
Or low.
So you think that we could do it either way?
Yeah, and, and, you know, sometimes, not the low bidder, there's not much difference between them, but, you know, in the trucking business, the low bidder may not always be available, so I have the option to go to the next, next bidder.
And you know these bidders, I mean, they're...
I do, I've worked personally with all of them, they're good reputable companies. We have, you know, contacted some other companies, but they never responded.
Yeah, I think we sent out eight or ten, I believe, or three or four.
Say, make more, you know.
But I mean, this also allows us, like when paving, you know, we need in the hall hot mix, that's, that's timely, you know, you can't do a paving job with two or three trucks.
Do these people have live bottomers too?
Uh, that I don't know.
Where are you gonna charge this to, so I'm...
It'd be a contract later, I'm assuming.
Okay, you probably have to adjust some of your line items, since we see what you've spent.
Right. It's, it's for road materials, but it would actually be all in funny, and that would be your, I guess, your call, because they are gonna be on road materials on them, so we're trying to use, for that advice.
Whoever...
Or counsel.
Yeah, whoever you award that to, I need a W nine, or I'm not cutting a check.
I don't think they're set up in the system yet.
They, they gave that with their bid, didn't they?
Not a W nine, no, no, not a W nine, I believe the...
You got their insurance, okay.
In, in fact, good point, y'all doing business with any new vendor, you need to tell them to go on the county's website, under the county auditor or purchasing is the form they can download and fill out, and tell them we won't cut any more checks.
And make that to what in the RFP?
We, I'm not saying we can't even, we can't even use them until, until everything's taken care of. You say, okay, and then give us...
I told them I'm not cutting a PO.
All right, what is your pleasure on item number two?
My?
I have a motion from Commissioner Allen, from Commissioner Rizalik, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those folks, thank you very much. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approving line item transfers.
I'll probably run all this kind of late, probably over the afternoon. You have any questions?
Uh, you have any questions?
I'd like to explain to you, excuse me, uh, the one on, um, fund one eighteen, that was, um, our money to be put aside to do some, uh, ride bikes. And, uh, the dad, Mr. Pulsor, sent some stuff over to us. We, uh, paid for those according to the line we, you know, indicated. And some of those were ride bikes that were plenty of, using that ride bike money, so we don't have to sit. So, before that part of this, we thought we'd use.
Haven't been using this, huh?
Oh, yes, that was the, the million dollars that we had settled. Uh, yes, we had bought probably seven, eight hundred thousand dollars of the running ways and we started off this project. Uh, and, uh, there's, we had told Mr. Pulsor about the ride bike money and what we had left, but still, when these people sent it to us, it was kind of into month, so we wanted to get that kind of.
Yeah, and we are still, just so you guys know, on that ride bike, uh, there is still a chance we're gonna have to do a condemnation on one each, on most of the working. It's not a, it's not, it's, it is a, uh, input. So, I think your point just, um, the brain is using.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the second one, uh, is fund forty-eight that I want to cause your attention. This is where we moved a million dollars and paid a portion of the E S, that's for five big seven and the nine four eight north. That was spoken about this morning. Do what?
Oh, I just heard him mention a, um, a million issue, I understand that.
Yeah, uh, I got involved Friday with some email that was ordered, Timmy. The city of Conklin, you're gonna notice it on your bills, okay, your utility bills, that they were starting to do the drainage programs, road drainage, and they're gonna add these to your utility bills, um.
Oh, sure.
The mayor's, the, the city manager is gonna be emailing me a breakdown, uh, today, he was gonna get it on me, but he's estimating that, like, all the accounts we have with him are probably less than nine hundred dollars a month. So, it's gonna be spread out.
Only do it on the, on the ones that's in the city.
Yes, yes.
Yes, for city drainage.
Yeah, it's gonna be some money set aside for storm break.
The city of Dallas started that some years back and everybody in there, uh, jumping on it.
It's a city terrible, my residential is pretty.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make y'all aware of it, so next, you're gonna start that in March, so when you see those utility bills, that'll be a little bit different, Tim, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of money, because that's not very much that he's told me about, you know.
Nine hundred and twenty?
Yeah, we're all.
What they're estimating?
Yes, what they're estimating. I would imagine it depends on your, your metering, they've probably got a amount of.
No, no, they carry light trip parking lots.
Okay, okay, yeah, right.
They just go within the, the storm store.
Yeah.
One of the rock schools in Concordshire, that.
Oh, and a piece of Dallas that they didn't even have a storm store on, on that end of Congress, and our land is backed up to the river. So, all the water coming, things going down.
And they kill choices, yeah.
All right, other questions on the line item transfers? Make a motion to approve the line item transfer. I have a motion from Commissioner Vlach, I have a second. Mr. Shane's second motion, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those folks, item number seven, discuss and consider claim for payment.
Your, uh, claims for payment are nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, you had a little breakdown in your graph, about two hundred and fifty thousand of that was from miscellaneous, uh, different various accounts that we paid to give us out of the road and bridge expenses, was a little over two hundred million, ride away.
Two hundred million or?
Two hundred and one point six K, sorry.
You say, man, we fix it, we know.
Yeah, uh, roadway expenses was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, uh, your road gone expenses about sixty-two, uh, juvenile detention, uh, was forty thousand, utilities was about thirty-eight, and then your, uh, recent one, three, and four materials was right at thirty-seven thousand. Autopsy and postmortem was about thirty, there were fourteen or sixteen cases sent to the Dallas County.
Yeah, I had that marked.
I had it marked in the bills, I didn't even use it. I don't know, maybe you might fix in the roads and fill them a bit.
You're not on your agenda, but.
The JP's are doing it, I have the paperwork attached showing that the JP's have called and want precinct.
That's just a lot, but the big question will be.
Well, now, if you remember, let's see, last year, it was nineteen fifty, uh, a body, now it's two thousand fifty, we have enough like nine.
Yeah, we also need to have a discussion with them about that other, autopsy. On, on page four, we've got a Gabriel Rollis, we come to you.
That is for the actuarial study on, uh, our benefits and stuff. That has to be done every two years to go.
I just didn't recognize the name.
Yes, sir, y'all had approved them, I think y'all had approved them, uh, Commissioner Shane, before I even started in two thousand twelve, and they do this every two years. In fact, uh, Lori H R is the one that orders the report and contact, and then she gives me a copy of the report, so I can give it to the outside auditor.
Karen, under the bail expense, I see it looks like they're still using their credit card for all types of stuff. If they not been advised, like, um, you know, that they're supposed to go through the PO process like we do, and have an account of, uh, their vendors rather than buying stuff with a credit card all the time?
Uh, that was something that the purchasing department gave the sheriff's office credit cards to make purchases that they needed and, uh, secure rooms, secure training for all those officers.
Yeah, but, I mean, this is office supplies, two of them are for office supplies. Do we, do they not buy from the same vendor we buy from?
Uh, we have to pull the, the credit card statement and see what they bought. We need to.
We've had a discussion about, you know, we can go to Walmart and buy pads and stuff cheaper than that, but we don't have an account there, and we don't have a credit card anymore, so.
Well, guess what? Your new inner purchasing agent come to visit you. And I've been offering since two thousand twelve to do the purchase card system. She's ready to do that, and that would give department heads purchase cards that are tied in with the state procurement, city bank or city court, whichever one plus we use, and you would be assigning that card to somebody to keep up with it. We would have daily access to see what you're charging, just to make sure that it's used for appropriate purchases. You know, alcohol, parties, and porn movies, and stuff like that.
That's not appropriate.
That's not appropriate, so. But the one good thing about the state procurement is because it works with the software we have, and you just download it, it goes through and sorts it and puts it out by department and the user. Then you get a report sent to you, where you attach your receipts, and you say, yeah, that's the right line. Well, that, I'll have twenty of that to go with this one, because it's really office supplies, and this is go, you can change it around.
So, this is gonna feel like a master card that we can use it, more where it touch fly or.
It will, the M C C codes will be set up that, like, if you send somebody to school, they can go to school, they can pay for their room, they can pay for their meals, but it won't pay for alcohol, movies, all this other kind of stuff.
Well, I know.
Now, I'll caution you.
That's important.
Lori told her when we do it, we're gonna have legal counseling law, because there's gonna be a paper sign that when you accept that card, there's not gonna be any mis打名. That's the only way I can get protected with the outside auditor.
Well, that, you know. I teach you that.
Yeah, we did that at the water district, and we had that purchase card system. And, um, I had, out of the nine and a half years that I worked there, I had one employee that accidentally, it was, at that time, Bank of America had a contract with the state. He had a Bank of America debit card, and he accidentally used it over the weekend to get gas, like, less than thirty dollars to fill up his little car. And he called me over the weekend, upset, crying, because he had signed a paper, like, oh, he's saying, I terminated him, misused that card. And I said, that's it, bring me your card, I'm gonna make a picture of it, that's the same money card, write me a check, and we're okay. So, be some, it'll be a workshop, Commissioner Phillips, that you can be over and organize, have me train these people, what's appropriate, what's not.
And I'll even get, you know, the city, I, I guess, I.
Won't have to, we can have S T W, you can pay them a maintenance fee anyway, and they'll have to set it up for us to make it dump into the software, and make sure we have all our wires straight and not crossed, and we could have their kind of some training.
You know, that's a lot of changes. They know how to work that question.
Yes, I did.
Which, the big one, Commissioner, or?
No, no, that was the same one I was on, on the second page seven, uh, again, there are one, two, three, four, five city bank charges under, um, G I S licensing, financial software, computer repairs, and computer infrastructure. And one of them is for eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars to put on a credit card. Again, do we not have these vendors set up that we can, like, bill us like normal, and then we pay them?
Let me see what that was for, Commissioner. Now, that's George's line items, where he orders stuff.
I, I know, but.
Okay.
They ordered it online with a credit card?
I mean, that was my question, it's why, if it's vendor in another state or something, I, I might.
Just get a PO like we do?
I don't know.
Why should they issue a PO even if it's on a credit card?
Yeah.
That's my policy. George. He kept going, he said, he ran.
I know.
I think he ran to the bathroom, he, he go backwards, that way.
Yeah, there's.
He looking for George, he went in his office, could he?
He went in his office.
City court bill. City court bill.
He paid all, all those.
These are the different line items that Daniel went through and got receipts from them, found that work, we can be owed, so let's see what, what all this is.
George.
Yes, sir.
Can you probably tell us, this computer, I mean, this, uh, credit card charge, eleven thousand two hundred and forty, computer issue? Is that a vendor that we don't have a, um, policy set up, payment policy that we don't have a company, I need a PO and a PO? I mean, I was, you know, we were talking about a credit card charges, people, these are, credit cards are supposed to be under current policy for, you know, emergency. And, uh, we really don't know what we're doing, we're paying, it's a C O, I mean, it's a C O. Unless we go to the pool, hasn't it?
Discount electronics, discount electronics.
So, it's several.
Yes, it's, it's several, for the ten thousand seventy.
Yeah, we give those to the, what was that here, we give those to, uh, Ron.
Adobe Acrobat, uh, P T distributors. Ron's.
So, we can make some, we can make all the rocks, he gets all, all this. So, maybe we can change his head a little. Yeah, well, you know, like I say, our, our credit card. Well, actually, no, actually, it's, it's also, so, let's say it costs less, but. A vendor that's not in our system, and I really don't, they don't bill us, so my question is, let me tell you, it's like a thousand four dollar mark. Vendors, we don't have accounts.
So, we don't like getting questions on our, on our.
I T discount electric was led to notebook, I T discount electronics, one five.
So, they can just bill us and then we pay them like normal, so.
Says Austin, Texas.
Lori does white work, can we?
They say that there's several of them discounted, that's Austin, Texas. Amazon, Washington, Adobe is in California.
Mark that for Amazon.
Okay, the short answer on that vendor, they don't like to take PO, POs, they'd rather, rather do it online, but we wanna change the policy and wait on your inventory, on byway.
Well, I'm not talking about changing policy, I'm talking about adhering to the policy that we currently have.
We might need to change that policy.
Yeah, I agree.
Primary view.
And if we do, if, I mean, I, I agree with that, if we do that, then that would help us procure stuff also.
See, our, our goal is customer service, provide, the folks quickly, can.
But, I mean, you know, maybe we need to look at changing.
You missed, you missed part of it. Lo, uh, Lisa is talking to me about doing a purchase card system that I was wanting to do in two thousand twelve in the product S T O N, and got it approved. And that will eliminate having to use the credit card, if they're even using a purchase card, that would be charged automatically to your system, and we dumped it into the financial software, senior reports, you attach your receipt.
Problems are, with discount electronics, when you do a PO with them, you get the PO, they don't ship anything until they send you an invoice, and then you have to send them a check, and when they receive the check, then they ship the goods.
So, we don't have credit with these people, right?
No, no, no.
And most of the time, they make the check clear before they start up.
I know that for a fact on some of the other places.
But that's what took so long on, the one and only time I've done a PO with them, is because we had, had to send a check, we had to clear, and then they shipped, uh, stuff, usually stuff with discount electronics is stuff that I need like.
Yesterday.
Quickly, yeah.
If the purchasing follows through with what she's talking about, that, that.
Yeah. And I, I heard the part was more similar.
That's what we tried to do last year, we were bringing it up and do something.
We're on, we're on track, we're getting there, just give us some time, give some.
Thanks. I still have an issue with this one here, we've got two good bills here. Didn't you come back over here, we're cutting checks for ninety-eight cents?
Well, we're not cutting a check for ninety-eight cents, it was coded to a different line item, because it was for postage.
No, I know this, okay.
Okay, the two big checks to her have to do with sexual assault on a child, I can't tell you any more. The judge proved that because of all the hours spent.
A year.
To take care of that child.
I would do it.
Okay. I looked at that too, Commissioner, because I questioned it.
Okay, I don't even know what you, why it takes so long. We had two, two attorneys, uh, or two charges on page twenty-three, again, the, the, the cases were cleared in seven twenty-three to fifteen, and the other one was cleared in three eighteen to fifteen.
I think, you know. Yeah, I mean.
They were like, they were like getting some of the stuff to us, and then.
I mean, he's so honest, it's funny, funny, I, I can't imagine that he's doing anything wrong. I mean, I saw who it was, it's all right.
Well, he's got four judges that are standing in here that have worked really, really hard, and they set those fees at a cheaper rate.